Good evening. The meeting will come to order. It's our second meeting in May. And would you please read the adequate notice complaint statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
President Vartan?
President. All right, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes, do we have a motion for the regular and closed session meeting minutes of May 2?
So moved.
Second.
All right. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I will abstain from that one, having missed a meeting. All righty. The motion carries. On to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I hope you've enjoyed this beautiful day. So first, two quick things. Firstly, the deadline to register to vote in the June 6 primary is today, Tuesday, May 16. The City Clerk's Office is at 5:12, upstairs. 5:12 Springfield Avenue will be open until 9:00 p.m. tonight if you still need to register to vote. The 2023 Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony will be held on Monday, May 29. The parade honors the men and women who have lost their lives in military service to our country. It will begin at 10:00 a.m. at 25 to Forest Avenue and proceed to the Village Green. Veterans who are unable to march may request a ride in the parade. Please meet members of the American Legion at the start of the parade route at 25 to Forest Avenue to request assistance. All Summit civic, nonprofit, and school groups are encouraged to make creative posters and displays and march along with veterans in the parade. The most patriotic group will receive a pizza party for up to 30 people and will be announced as part of the ceremony on the Village Green. Spectators are encouraged to gather onto Forest Avenue, Beechwood Road, Union Place, and along Maple Street. More information is available at the city's website, cityofsummit.org. And that's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. On to City Administrator Rogers for your report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Four items. Summer hours for city locations begin on Friday, May 26, and continue through Friday, September 1. City Hall will be open Monday to Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and Fridays from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That information is also posted on the city website. The opening day for the Summit Family Aquatic Center is Saturday, May 27. Facility hours during June and the rest of the summer are available at summitcommunityprograms.com. And the other item for DCP is this year's Summit Has Pride event will be held on Friday, June 2, on the Village Green from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Again, more information on their website, summitcommunityprograms.com. And then finally, a reminder, the deadline to renew animal licenses is Wednesday, May 31 this year. Registration notices have been sent to all owners of licensed dogs and cats, as state law requires every dog that either reached the age of seven months or has a set of permanent teeth will to be licensed. By local ordinance, cats must be licensed at seven months of age. Proof of rabies vaccination must accompany an application. Renewals received after May 31. Deadline on curry fee of $10. Please contact the Health Office at 908-277-6464 with any questions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right. I have a few things. So many thanks to Council President Pro Tem Susan Hairston for standing in for me again at the last meeting while I was traveling. Second, this last weekend, the City of Summit held our celebration of Arbor Day at the Tiny Forest. Congratulations to our forester, John Linson, the Environmental Commission, the Shade Tree Commission, and thanks to the Summit Conservancy for helping Summit celebrate our 28th year as a Tree City USA. Third, the paving of Summit Avenue tentatively is scheduled to begin shortly after Memorial Day by Union County. We will have an exact date next week, and as soon as we do, it will be blasted out by the Communications Office. Huge thanks to Aaron Schreger for staying on top of this and on the top of the county on this. Okay, and that is it for my report. We're moving on to the main event, our budget hearings. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to clear my throat real quick. So back on April 18, we adopted Resolution Number 10253, and that introduced the 2023 municipal parking and sewer operating budgets and established a hearing date. And today is that hearing. The preparation of the city budget is a huge undertaking. I want to thank the municipal finance team, City Administrator Michael Rogers, and CFO Tammy Baldwin, as well as the city staff. Thank you to my colleagues on the Finance Committee, Mayor Radist, Council President Vartan, and Councilmember Allen for all your work on this as well. In addition, thank you to the rest of my colleagues on Common Council, Councilmembers Fox, Hamlet, Hairston, and Levine for diving into this budget with us, asking some great questions of the Finance Committee. Last but not least, members of the community who are here tonight, so thank you for being a part of this as well. This budget is the result of hours and hours of work over the course of months by our city staff, department heads, finance team, with discussions and creative thinking on how to deliver the services that we all enjoy and rely on, and to do so in the most affordable way we can. This was a year with some significant challenges, but the final product is a responsible budget that balances those realities with this city's priorities, and it reflects what we value. In 2023, from the total tax bill, you're going to pay, about 50% of that money will go to the school district, about 25% goes to Union County, and about 21% goes to the City of Summit for the municipal tax levy. That 21% portion is what our hearing is about tonight. The total summary of revenues and appropriations is in the amount of $55,63,137. The municipal tax increase this year is 2 cents for every $100 in property value. Right at the beginning of this budget document are the goals used to set the priorities for the creation of this budget. And so here are those goals now. Develop and maintain a sustainable financial plan that balances short-term needs with long-term goals and objectives. Enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of municipal services. Improve communication and collaboration among departments to streamline processes and improve outcomes. Develop and implement policies and procedures that reflect best practices in municipal governance and agency operations. Foster a culture of innovation and continuous improvement that encourages staff to identify and implement new ideas and best practices. Provide high-quality customer service to residents and other stakeholders. Develop and maintain positive relationships with community partners and stakeholders, including neighborhood, excuse me, neighboring municipalities, civic organizations, and business associations. And finally, make continuing improvements to critical city assets and infrastructure. Those are the goals. And with that, Council President, I move to open this hearing.
Okay.
I second.
All righty. So we've got a motion and a second, and the hearing is open. Councilmember comments, questions? Nothing? Counsel? Jamie?
I'm happy to make a comment. I think this is, actually Tammy and Michael, this is a really beautiful budget document. It's my first one as a new councilperson, and it is extremely, for anyone at home who hasn't read the entire thing, it's very comprehensive. It contains not only the financials but goals, programmatic goals by department, which were very inspirational. So I very much, very much really enjoyed this. The, what I'm proud of is that within our capital budget, right now, we've, in these, this time of inflation, we've prioritized safety and infrastructure and done that quite well. I want to just highlight one item on the, in the capital budget within safety that I very much support but just want to point out. The geofence that we have in our budget is a big win for, I believe, safety and Summit, but it's a very powerful tool. And I think with that power comes responsibility. So I wanted to just bring that up publicly and say that it's really the future of policing and, and the future of, of council can ensure that something as powerful is only used for good. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
So I agree with Councilmember Levine about the geofencing. And what I wanted to do is just quickly ask our city administrator to touch on the effective tax rate issue. So about a month or two ago, there was an article and tap into that talked, that was comparing tax rates of different Union County communities, but the problem is it was comparing apples and oranges. And our budget has a really nice graph on page 69 of the budget that talks about the effective tax rates, which is the correct way to compare the different communities. And I'd like, Michael, to just quickly touch on that because I think it's, it's important. It was really misrepresented in that article.
For you, Counsel President. So when I presented on the budget, I always tried to point out this fact because generally when, when people are reporting on who pays the highest property taxes in a community, they're generally just looking at what the tax rates are and what the assessed value, what the tax base is, and they're not factoring in the key component of that, which is the equalization ratio, because as we know, our market values are much more than what your property values are. You could just look at what your property assessment is, and it's far lower than what your market, if you went out, so you set your home, what your market value is. So when you're actually trying to compare how much, what you're actually paying in taxes, it's really easy for people just to, just to look at the assessed value, look at what your current rate is, and not factor that in. When you factor in the ratio, the equalization ratio, and the example I gave was just because we know all of the rates in the respective communities in Union County, and that's what we were looking at. We, we're taking what the average assessed home is in Summit at $1 million for 2022. And when, if you apply that same, I'm not saying that the average home is $1 million in every other community, but when you apply that, and if there's a $1 million home, if you're using the equalization rate with what the current tax rate is, and ours last year was $4.28, and you run it through the ratio, which last year was 42.03%, you come up with an effective tax rate of $1.80. And when that happens, you're now comparing apple to apples with each community, because you're just, you're, you're saying that 100%, if we're looking at every residential home, and that's what we're talking about, and it's a $1 million home in, say, Rozelle or Fanwood, and I cite the four, three other communities, Fanwood and Garwood are, we're kind of middle of the county, you're looking, you can get your true amount of what you're paying through the effective rate if everything was all, you know, all things equal. So that's, that's sort of why we try to bring this up in a slide every year, because it's, it's often reported on that Summit pays the highest property taxes, but when you look at it through, if everybody was all things equal at 100% equalization, it's a very different number that you're seeing what you're actually paying through your rate. So we are the lowest, when you run it through an effective rate, the ratio, and you come up with effective tax rate, your total tax bill would be the lowest in the county. I'm hoping that I captured, it's not an easy concept, but I, I think it's important for residents to know this.
Thank you very much, Michael. I think if anyone wants to take a look, page 69 of the budget has a really nice graph, and you can see Summit's, for a $1 million house, it's $18,000 in taxes, and a $1 million house in Rozelle would be close to $36,000, so pretty close to double. So I think it's just an interesting fact to, to be aware of. So that's all I have.
Certainly. Putting, putting it in a shorter sentence or two would be basically, the same exact house in Summit, you're paying way less in taxes than the same exact house, for example, in Rozelle, right?
At $1 million.
Yeah. So, okay. Yes, Susan?
Thank you, Council President. And I'm glad you said that, Councilwoman Levine, because I thought I was being nerdy when I was saying to Michael how beautiful this budget presentation is, because Tammy, it's really outstanding, the way in which you provided such an in-depth narrative on each section, which tells a story about what our financial picture has been. And you did it for five years. You did it comparing every single perspective. And I'm really grateful for the time and effort and the clarity. So for, I want to echo what my colleagues have said. You really should take a look at this budget to see what we've come through, and I don't want to say how lucky we are to live in a town that has benefited from federal regulations, federal funds that were afforded to communities through the different bills having to do with COVID and the American Rescue Act. And I know it now means for us to have a tighter belt going forward because our financial professionals have really taken the time to use reserves wisely. And so I, I want to thank you for that discipline and forethought. And I know that we're up against the future, and I wanted to ask a particular question having to do with, we've benefited from the agreement with the hospital, and that ends, I'm looking at the summary, and it says now New Jersey will have a bed tax law that will generate $500,000 per year. Can you, can you say more about what that is?
It was a law signed in, Governor Murphy signed it into law in 2021, I believe, and it was, as a result of all the litigation that was going on at the Tax Appeal Court for years, we had an agreement, we came together, we came to a settlement agreement with, with Atlantic Health Systems in 2017. We had the benefit of seven years of that settlement agreement. But there were many communities in the state of New Jersey with being host communities to hospitals that were in a tax appeal litigation, and I think the state realized they needed to intervene and create some law. It was not without controversy and certainly differing opinions about it, but they assigned essentially, I think it's $3.50 per bed, and it was established at that time, so it's not something that can change. And I think, if I recall, it's about 504 beds that were locked into Overlook. So it's like a daily charge, and it's, it's the, the number we came up with is, is a little over $500,000 that they would owe, and there's 5% that goes to the county every year, and that will start next year for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
But that is less than our negotiated settlement, which we had for seven years.
Correct.
Yeah. Delia?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Miniger. Thank you to our city administrator and all the staff who put so much work into this. Great job. This is certainly one of those things that I, I was trying to keep up with as a brand new council member, and it's, it's very complicated, so thank you for all your work. The one question that I had, I spent probably, geez, I spent 45 minutes or so late at night going over a bunch of questions that I had for Councilmember Miniger last night, so we were able to get through most of those. The one question I just want to clarify, I just wanted to make sure that none of the goals are prioritized, correct? Like the initial goals, the police goals, are they in any sort of priority order?
No. Michael? No, it's, it's not set forth that way.
Okay. And then I guess the second thing I wanted to mention is that I asked the city administrator, I said the one thing that I would love to, which I probably would never get reelected for, is to have more police. And I know it would be a touchy subject, but in my heart, I do feel like if we could find extra funds and raise taxes a little bit for extra, extra police, I think it would be really, really important and impactful. Maybe we could look at that next year, Chief. We'd have to take your, your expertise, but we obviously want to give you whatever you need. So if that ever becomes an issue or something that you need more, I would fully support that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa? Nora?
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Hi, thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say I enjoyed being on the Finance Committee this year. It's really, the work that you do and the time that you put in and the dedication that you have to the city is extraordinary. I've had other CFOs actually comment on the work that you do and how our budget is actually so detailed compared to other municipalities. And I just want to say thank you for the work you do, and it's, it is difficult to watch municipalities, ours and across the state, doing more with less. And that's going to be, continue to be the challenge. And I think Summit does a really great job, and oftentimes, the first thing that's said is, we need to cut people in order to, you know, to save money. And my personal opinion is, is that people are assets, they're not liabilities, and the way that good cities are run are with good employees who have staff that can do the work. So you are constantly, I've noticed that City of Summit is responsible, but continues to have to find, you know, where can we cut? And I think we need to continue to push on legislative actions that could potentially be, not you per se, but like the energy tax receipts, right? Really keeping our eye on legislative mandates, financial mandates that get pushed on the municipalities that are detrimental to good, well-run cities. And to have counties end up getting more of our pie than we get is really a tragedy, in my personal opinion. So I would, I would agree with everyone that this budget is, this binder, it looks amazing, but the work in it is really how it's all made, how the, what do they say? What's the saying? Something's made. The pie is, the sausage is made.
I think it's a good thing, what the sausage is.
You don't always want to see it, but this is the time, it's fine.
Yeah. So. But I would say prioritizing for me next year would be safety, and I agree that, you know, with great power in, in our geofencing and so forth comes great responsibility, and safety is always my priority too. But thank you. Thank you for everything you do. It is, goes without saying. Okay?
Mayor?
Yep. Thank you. Well, that's a great segue into the two things that I wanted to say. Number one is that I'm one of the 401 mayors that have signed the letter to the governor in the state of New Jersey about the energy tax relief, and I will be reaching out to, tomorrow, to all of our state legislators who represent us here in Summit, to encourage them to push the, the governor and, and legislature to bring that money back to the communities where they belong. The other thing is, is, and of course, we all, number one priority, safety, right, in, in our city. And, and I think our police do a great job, but so I just wanted to share this morning, I attended the quarterly meeting of the, the emergency management team, which is made up of first responders, police, fire, EMT. Often there's, the school is there, members of Overlook, library, it would fill, we filled the room upstairs in the Whitman Room. And it's a really interesting exercise. We have a great EMT coordinator, Joe Howke, who used to be with the Fire Department for many years. And we had, one of the things that the police and fire have been talking about is an exercise that they want to do, first tabletop, and then actual, you know, real people, and I'm not, for security reasons, I'm not going to talk about what it is, but it is so proactive and forward-thinking, and it is not usually done because it's hard to do. And I was compelled to say to these men and women, you know, thank you for thinking forward, for being so proactive, because we tend to think we live in this lovely town. Yes, we do have. We have car thefts. We've got burglaries here and there, right there. But for 22,000 people, it's not rampant crime, but we have issues. We're 20 minutes, half hour from a major municipal, a major city. But really bad things could happen here. And our police, fire, and EMT are thinking about this in advance, planning, having, hoping to have, and they will have a plan on the shelf and hoping never to use it, but it's there. And I, I just think, these are the things that our police, fire, and EMTs do all the time. We're not aware of it. I just wanted to share this with you tonight, with everyone who's maybe watching. We have a great group of men and women who, who serve to protect and guard our community. So I want to thank all of them, and of course, I want to thank all of our financial crew for all the work for this budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just have one more.
Sure.
What I also wanted to say that stood out like a green, not a red flag, a green flag, was the 500% increase in grants, in grant funds, to go to $645,000 in grant funds is just outstanding.
So I was just going to say $500,000 increase.
Increase, yeah. So I did want to thank all the department heads. I know that everybody has been fastidious about that, so thank you in keeping us from having to make cuts, from taking advantage of that.
Just following on the grants, right, Michael, we have to, we have to report our anticipated grant revenue. We have to freeze that at a certain time throughout the year, right? So there's the possibility, and of course, we hope that we will get many more millions of dollars in grants the rest of this year. But when does that cutoff happen?
When we're introduction, introducing the budget. So it's what we have received.
Right.
To the point we introduced the budget, and then any grants that come in thereafter, the budget's adopted, that comes in form of resolutions, what they refer to as Chapter 159.
Excellent. Okay. All right. Yes, Delia?
Through you, Council President. City Administrator Rogers, can you just briefly explain how we obtain the AAA credit rating and how often that's evaluated, and how our debt, how our debt service ties into all of that going forward?
So when, typically when we go out for long-term issuances, we'll have credit rating agency reviews. They'll, we'll have multiple, and with all three credit rating agencies, Moody's, S&amp;P's, and Stan and Fitch. And so we'll, Tammy and I, and our financial advisor from Acacia, Jennifer Edwards, our bond counsel, our auditor, we'll, we're part of that team, which will, will sit, and there's, could be 25 questions that we'll, we'll receive from each credit rating agency, and we'll go through. And a lot of what, of course, the financials speak for themselves, they review everything, they review our budget, which is more than they get in most municipalities in what they have to review, so it makes it a lot easier for them. But they also review management teams, they review, you know, they go through, and, and that's the stability, goes to stability in your community. So when, when municipalities have changeover, it's not, it's not looked upon positively. So that, that's always something that plays into their credit, their ultimate rating. But the financials and certainly what your ability, what your tax base and what's going on in your tax base, so they evaluate a lot of different aspects of a municipality. How it plays into our rating, is that, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear. I mean, we have, we have the highest rating possible. I mean, we have, we have the highest rating possible, AAA, by all three, which is achievement for a municipality, which, there might be a couple more that, maybe they have triple ratings with two, but I don't know if they're all three. Counties have that. It's, and I'm trying to just remember your one part of that, what else were you looking for with?
I mean, I guess I was just asking, I guess, for instance, if you have a triple, AAA credit rating.
How does that affect us?
Well, when you talk about having, you've mentioned something about, like, consistency, but like, we obviously have taxpayers who are paying their taxes consistently, so that...
So collection rate, everything that goes in. They look at everything, your collection rate, we have a phenomenal collection rate, over 99%. All of that goes, gets factored in. And then, certainly, what, what the tax stability, looking at even just the mix of your tax base. If there's anything new, any new, you know, development projects, anything that the assessor can weigh in on for new value. The ability to pay is certainly in looking at the economics of your population. So those are all favorable factors that go into the rating.
Yeah. And following on that, you know, looking at our debt picture, borrowing power is not our concern, right, Michael? It's the fact that, it's the fact that almost 15%, or more than 15% this year of our operating budget is now debt service. And that's where, you know, we, obviously, we need to balance investing in our infrastructure and the tools that our city staff need to do their jobs well, but also balancing the need to not increase our debt to the point that it's too much of our operating.
That's correct.
Any more comments from members of council on this? I just want to, again, say thank you to everyone that's been involved in this. Thank you again to the rest of council, thank you again to the Board of Ed, the Board of School Estimate, and of course, the county commissioners for their fourth straight year of flat budgets. Our city staff are absolutely fantastic, incredible. You do so much with so little and with so much grace under pressure, and we are so thankful. This budget, I think, sends the clear statement to the people of Summit that despite significant challenges, the council is deeply committed to delivering high-quality government services in a way that's responsible, forward-looking, transparent. So I'm going to open it up to the public portion of the budget hearing. So conduct, to conduct it efficiently, I'm asking for folks in the community to please be considerate of city staff and our neighbors by limiting comments and questions to three minutes. Please give us your comments and questions upfront. Staff and council will address the things we can address tonight and follow up directly on what we can't shortly after. So we're open to community input on our budget. Come on up.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I am Dr. Betty Livingston Adams, a 40-plus-year homeowner, taxpayer, and resident of Summit. My address is 12 Shadyside Avenue. I'm also a historian and retired university professor. And tonight, I'd just like to say something for us to consider as we proceed in prioritizing the budget. Over much of the last century, Summit portrayed itself as, quote, "the ideal suburb." Of late, I now hear residents characterizing our six-square-mile town as a crime-ridden city. Two monikers, one clearly aspirational, the other, I would say, is simply wrong. When I ask, did Summit become a crime-infested community, such that residents live in a state of fear and apprehension, and require heavy surveillance for protection of home, hearth, and health? Before we accept a culturally-bound discourse that generates fear and panic among us, and labels our neighbors, employees, patrons of our restaurants and businesses, and our schoolchildren as the feared other, the outsider, the intruder, or the car thief in waiting, I say, "Show me the facts." Before we laden our municipal budget to slay the imaginary monster under the bed or lurking on our streets, we need to demand of ourselves, our neighbors, and our elected officials to know the facts. For the facts tell us quite a different story, my fellow residents. Did you know that Summit is rated number three as the best place in Union County to raise a family? Or that compared to other New Jersey communities of similar population size, Summit has a crime rate that is noticeably lower than the average? Or that for violent as well as property crimes, Summit's per capita and per square mile rate is below average, making Summit safer than most comparably-sized cities all across America? While we are not an ideal place, we have no reason to believe that we live in a bubble of fear and panic. Performances of fear-mongering and pushing to create a surveillance state are not new tactics. Historically, during moments of cultural and social change, different segments of the population have provoked public hysteria and the labeling of residents as others, outsiders, intruders, and disruptors of the family hearth. These moments of manufactured panic are generally followed by public moments of relief, when grand, though empty gestures that burden taxpayers and alter community values for generations, all to affirm the authority of a small group of people.
Dr. Adams, you have about three minutes. I'll ask you to wrap up, please.
Thank you. I ask you to consider the values and attitudes that reflect us, this community, and that tell our children and our visitors who we are as 21st-century Summit residents and taxpayers. As the prophet said centuries ago, "Seek peace and well-being for the city, for in its peace and well-being, you will have peace." Show me the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Adams, can we, can we get a copy of your statement?
Why don't I exchange a copy?
You can email. That's perfect. Thank you. Other comments from the public on the budget?
Elizabeth Fagan, 27 Hawthorne Place. I just have a question, clarification. It looks like we, the city, owns nearly $100 million worth of property. Is that about accurate?
That's our fixed asset assumption. I mean, yeah, that's about, it's a little over, it's about close to 110, yeah.
Okay. And then, we have, we own close to 60 buildings, is that fair?
I think that's close to, yeah.
Are we, is there, are there any plans or intentions to sell any of that property or, other than the Broad Street West?
Firehouse.
The firehouse.
Other than that area, no, that's...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, members of the public? Nope. Okay. I think we're going to close the hearing on our budget, and thank you to everyone. We're moving on to the Special Improvement District Budget Hearing. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Back on April 18th, we adopted Resolution Number 10254. That introduced the 2023 Special Improvement District Budget and established hearing date, and that hearing is also today. The Special Improvement District, an entity established by the state, is better known as Summit Downtown. Summit Downtown, Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that manages, on behalf of the city, the taxes levied from Summit's retail business district, and how to, and how those taxes are spent to promote downtown businesses. I move to open this hearing.
A second.
Okay. We're on to the Downtown Improvement District Budget Hearing. We'll start with members of council. Comments? No?
Well, I have a question, just for clarification. It's obviously my first time approving the Summit Downtown budget, so I guess my question is, Council President, I'm assuming this was approved unanimously through the Board of Summit Downtown, or was, do we have information on, I'm assuming it was approved by them unanimously?
Yes. It was approved, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for the purpose of the community, the Summit Downtown, Inc. board consists of those who are elected from the downtown business community. There are also two members of council and the mayor, and the city administrator is an ex-officio member of that body as well. Yes, Mark?
So I just wanted to commend SDI on their work. Summit's downtown, I mentioned at the last meeting, but since it was very late at night, I'm just going to go through some stats that I have. Summit's vacancy rate is 0.71%. So it's less than 1% vacancy in the retail, in the downtown. Just some estimates from other communities, Westfield is at 7%, Red Bank is at 5%, and Montclair is at 7.2%. So I think that a lot of this, I want to commend SDI for its work and for the wonderful partnership that we've had with SDI in sustaining our downtown during what has been a very challenging time. We've come out of the pandemic, as you can hear from these statistics, much, much better off than other communities in terms of our downtown's health and vibrancy. And in 2021, we won a Great Places Award, I believe that's, I don't remember the exact title, for the downtown. And just recently, we got a certification for our downtown as well. So we are recognized downtown statewide. And the partnership and the work that we've done with SDI, I think, you know, and SDI's efforts are, you know, in large part what we can, you know, we can thank SDI for that. So that's all I wanted to say, and I support this budget.
Sure. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I'll just close up again by adding my thanks to the SDI board, the professional staff members, Nancy and Amanda, the downtown business community, and the city staff, of course, that work hand-in-hand to make our downtown so wonderful. So I will, at this point, open it up to the community for our public comments on the SDI, on the Special Improvement District Budget at this point.
Good evening. Kevin Smallwood, 160 Summit Avenue. For those of you who are currently on the SDI board and past members of SDI boardroom about to bring up, you're either going to laugh and shake your head, or you're going to be like, this again, tree wells.
Tree wells.
Yes. Yes. So I was going through the budget, and I noticed that on the design and beautification, there was not a line item for tree wells. And when I was on the board in the past, that's always been a line item, and always a point of contention between what we should be doing, is the SDI part of it, or is the city part of it, is a collaboration? And I think, for the most part, we've, SDI pretty much kind of took over for it. And, you know, I've, when I was the chairman of SDI in 2014, I walked with the, an arborist, and we saw 181 tree wells. Now, that's the entire Sid, but my focus is more or less on the downtown, our tree-lined streets, that what makes us so beautiful, the lights that the hang on, you know, it's, those tree wells are extremely important to, I think, the beautification of our downtown. So I'm hoping that the $40,000 that is in the, in the design and beautification, there's also line item budget says "design and beautification," and there's $40,000 in that. And I'm assuming, hoping, that a portion of that money is going to go towards tree wells. When I did walk those 181 tree wells with the arborist, the thing is about our tree wells is, they, they're not all the same. And so you can't plant the same things in each one, so it cannot be uniform. You've got tree wells that are in the sun all day, you've got tree wells that are in the shade all day, you have some that are shallow and some that are, that are deeper and have a deeper rooting system. So we don't have the ability to uniform the entire tree wall system so that it all looks beautiful and roses. And if you've noticed that there are a few, not a lot, more, we would like to actually have more, I think, at least from an SDI perspective. Some of the property owners and store owners do take care of theirs. I like to go to Fiorino's, and they, their tree wells are extremely beautiful. And there, outside of several other restaurants and store owners, they take care of theirs as well. So the suggestion from the arborist was, since you can't uniform them in the most cost-effective way, was to weed and mulch. So I'm hoping that, out of that $40,000 budget that is being requested for the design and beautification, that at least $5,000 could go towards the tree wells in our downtown to make them look beautiful. They're either weeded, there's trash in them, and I understand we're not going to, even if we just weed and mulch, there's still going to be trash in them every now and then. Maybe that's something that our eighth graders can do for, you know, their community service, and maybe once a month or whatever, we can figure that out in terms of getting the trash. But, I mean, I think we really, I think we really need to focus on the tree wells.
Kevin, you're at about three minutes, so...
Okay. Sorry. Anyway, that was, that was my point. I was, I'm hoping that out of the $40,000, that we'll be able to spend some money on the tree wells. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will throw that to, yeah, can I throw that to Aaron first? And just to explain the, sort of, the relationship between what SDI is doing versus what the city's doing? And then, we, I know we have the SDI treasurer's here, and we'll, we'll circle back all around on that. Yes. Aaron first, though.
Certainly, through you, Council President. I can't speak to what specifically they budgeted for, but I could tell you, there has been a big emphasis and desire to improve the tree wells in the downtown this year, which is great to see. The trees are getting older, some of them will face some challenges, like the Emerald Ash Borer, as well as other bugs and hazards that they might be impacted by. Last week, the forester did release and draft format his review of the trees for the downtown, because a lot of the trees are hitting 20 years, so we're at the point where we do need to kind of have a long-term plan in place. Mr. Smallwood is correct that you do have essentially microclimates, because you have shaded sides of the street, and then, other sides, the north side gets a lot more sun. Beechwood is very open, gets, you know, wind, so, so we can't just do a monoculture throughout. And we are looking at that, and we are, we are open to ideas and improvements that we see fit right now with the wickets. We're not replacing them when they're hit. There are thousands of dollars to put in, and there, it's, they're not, they're all custom size, no two tree wells are the same. So we, so we are currently just removing them when they are damaged, but we are working on a comprehensive plan.
Okay. And by wickets, just for everybody watching, you mean like, the metal stuff that everybody hits their door on?
Yes. About, exactly. So about, about five years ago, we removed a lot from the street side.
Yep.
But now, as they're getting damaged, you know, we fix them when we can, but it's a real hassle, and unfortunately, are very expensive to replace.
Yes. Understood.
Excuse me, and Aaron, we have, DCS does do watering.
When, when there is plants put in, the DCS will do the watering. We will send out people from the sanitation unit to do weeding and cleanups. We intend to do it a lot more frequently this year because we're better staffed. We had some struggles last year keeping staff, you know, fully staffed. So yes, but we will help with the watering, so.
Understood. Thank you. We have the treasurer from SDI, so I want to invite you to chat to that.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Mr. Smallwood, I just want to say thank you for your comments. And regarding the tree wells, I know I'm not involved with SDI, but one, one idea that I've had for years, how many tree wells do we have again?
It's more than 100.
Yeah, over 100. 181. 181? I think it'd be a great project for the elementary schools to tackle and have a contest and maintain them, and there's, there's no better way to fix your tree wells than get the kids involved. So if you want to save some money and make it a contest, I think that would be...
I think Lisa's on, Lisa's on...
You're on that, Lisa?
I think you're on that.
Okay.
You want to talk about that for two seconds?
Well, yeah.
And then we'll let Claire answer the question.
Because this has been my, my thing, too. Actually, I walked around with Nancy to look at the tree wells one day, and to Kevin's point, a lot of the tree wells were planted last year, and so it takes some time for them to grow in and fill in. So as we were walking around, we were trying, with the landscaper, we were identifying, not everything had grown in yet, so she said, "Once everything grows in, we'll start looking." Because my goal was 100 tree wells this year. So there's a subcommittee who's going to be working on it, but this year, we just wanted to see what grew in. And to your, exactly to your point, like, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, landscaper, you know, Environmental Commission, I think this is a really great opportunity for the community to do something amazing and come together. So I just, I didn't, I won't say the price, because you can give the price, what the contractor's going to cost, or the landscaper's going to cost this year, so.
Okay. Claire Toth, 11 Sunset Drive. I am both the treasurer of SDI and the chair of the Design and Beautification Committee. And so as, as Councilwoman Allen alluded, we, SDI does have a contract with an outside landscaper, in addition to the city, who has been planting in the tree wells. Is, a number of perennials went in last year with the idea that over time, they would fill in the tree wells. The landscaper will continue. I wish I recalled off the top of my head what the contract is for, but I believe it is north of $5,000, so that should alleviate Mr. Smallwood's concerns.
Excellent.
I just had a question through you, Council President, and maybe, you might as well just stay up there, since you're up there. One thing I did ask our CFO for today, and I also reached out to the director of SDI, was have we received the audited financials from '21 and '22 for SDI yet?
We have '21, we're beginning the audit for '22.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. And I had intended to see if they were on the website, probably not, but we can make them available to you. The 990, which is the tax, the informational tax return, is a public document. We can certainly get that.
Can I ask a question? Is there a reason why we approve the budget before looking at the audited or the actuals from, is that just the way it is? I'm just curious, I mean.
Michael, do you want to speak to that?
She's separate documents, I mean, it's never, it's not combined, as far as the review.
Okay.
The audit won't be done till mid-year, and SDI cannot collect any of the assessment to pay its bills until the council approves the budget.
So we owe you a little money, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Got you, okay, yes.
Just one last thing, $9,000 was the contractor for the land, or the.
Ah, you found it, thank you. I knew you were on, on the emails, thank you.
What was it?
$9,000.
$9,000.
$9,000, more than $5,000.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Claire while she's still standing? No? Okay. Other comments from the community on the special improvement district budget? Okay, I think we're gonna close that hearing, and we're gonna move on now, because we're just excited, to the resolutions related to the budget as well. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Miniger to get us started on that.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10361. Having just had the hearing on the 2023 municipal parking and sewer operating budgets, I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Okay, and this is one, well, do we have any additional comments? We all just made some comments on the budget. Anything additional that we want to add at this point? Anything from the community, last chance budget? Okay, we're gonna take a roll call vote on this one. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vortan?
Aye, all right. That motion carries, and we have a budget, ladies and gentlemen. So thank you for that. On to the next one, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10362. Having just had the hearing on the 2023 Special Improvement District budget, I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? And a roll call vote for this one as well, please, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vortan?
Aye, and that motion carries as well, and we'll get you the check as soon as possible for the first quarter assessment. All right, that motion carries, we have our budget hearings and our resolutions adopted. We're now moving on to a number of ordinances for introduction. I will turn it over to you, Madam Clerk, to read the first of many.
ID number 10329, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Ed Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Okay, and Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance for introduction that will provide resident parking on the post office lot. The post office lot is currently underutilized. This lot is currently for downtown employees, and this lot has not been full since COVID. If the Broad Street Garage is full, this will also provide more spaces for overflow parking. I move, I move to introduce this resolution.
Nice. Can I second?
Okay, thank you. And so just for the benefit of everyone watching, what we're, what we're doing here is we're voting on the introduction of this, so there won't be discussion about it, but the hearing, and where there will be discussion about it, will be the next council meeting, which is a Wednesday, the 7th of June. So I will ask for a vote on the introduction here, and it's, do we, it's a roll call? A roll call vote, please, yes.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vortan?
Aye, and the motion carries, thank you. On to the second ordinance for introduction, Madam Clerk.
ID number 10341, ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Ed Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Okay, Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance for introduction in regards to the Broad Street Garage and the Broad Street East Lot. The purpose of this ordinance is to increase the daily rate for non-residence parking from $12 to $14.95. We will also be using a reservation system through Park Mobile to keep the non-resident parking at a minimum. The Broad Street East Lot will be for residents and downtown employees. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Can I second?
Okay, and we will do a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vortan?
Aye, and the motion carries. The hearing for that one will also be on the 7th. All the hearings are gonna be on the 7th, just ahead, so, okay, on to the next one, Madam Clerk.
ID 10316, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, Subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets, and Subsection 7-25.4, Regulations.
Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance for introduction, sorry, a bunch of them today, the ordinance for introduction for a change in designation for the meters between Elm's, Elm and Maple on Morris. So for those of you who don't know, that's right outside of the connection. The purpose of this ordinance is to change this from employee parking only to three-hour public use parking. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Can I second?
Okay, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vortan?
Aye, and the motion carries. Hearing will be on the 7th, and the next one, Madam Clerk.
ID 10313, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, Subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Okay, and Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance for introduction for a rate increase for all street meters that have a three-hour, five-hour, or 12-hour time limit. The increase will go from 50 cents to $1. The last increase was in 2006. So this will make all street meters the same price at $1. This, for, for background knowledge, this was originally supposed to have been on the agenda prior to COVID, so we're, that's why we are introducing it now. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Can I second?
Okay, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vortan?
Aye, and the motion carries. Hearing on the 7th, and the last ordinance for introduction, Madam Clerk.
ID 10298, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-69, Fees for Municipal Services, Subsection 2-69.9, Fees to be Collected by the Parking Services Agency.
Okay, and Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. Glad this is the last one. This is an ordinance for introduction, and this ordinance, the purpose of this ordinance is to increase bagged meter and dumpster permit fees. The last time bagged meter and dumpster permit fees had increased was in 2008, so the bagged meter for private construction will be $30 per day, utility company construction $25, nonprofits, construction $25, and I might have messed the last one up, and the last one will be $40. If I wasn't clear, and I need to do that again, let me know.
I think, I think it's okay.
Okay.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, I can read it again.
We just need the.
I move to.
Yeah, and then the second.
Introduce this ordinance.
Can I second?
Okay, perfect, and we'll take our final roll call vote on those.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vortan?
Aye, and that motion carries as well. All of the hearings for those parking-related ordinances are gonna be on the next council meeting, which is Wednesday, the 7th of June. Okay, we're moving on to resolutions. We have a few from law and labor, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I'll introduce ID number 10367, which is a resolution to renew the 2023, 2024 liquor license for the Elks Club of the Summit Lodge. And whereas the Elks Club that's located at 40 Maple Street has applied for renewal of their club license, and hey, they have received the insurance that is required and met all the requirements set forth for the license, I introduce this resolution for approval.
A second.
Okay, and so we have a number of council members who are conflicted with this one. So I think what we're gonna do is take a roll call vote, and a number of us are gonna abstain, and we'll get that started.
Okay. Excuse me, I just have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, I just have a question. I just want to be clear on the process for abstention for this particular vote, because I just wasn't clear how many people were members of the Elks. I know we kind of went over it today.
Right, so if, if more than a, if more than a quorum of council members are conflicted in voting, what happens is it'll go to the state ABC for approval, is that correct?
Right.
Madam Clerk.
We don't anticipate that now, we've learned.
Right, okay.
But question becomes whether abstention, if, if there's gonna be discussion on this resolution, those who are conflicted.
If there's gonna be discussion, those who are conflicted should step off the dais and not participate in any discussion whatsoever.
Okay, so, we should do that.
Okay, Rosie, do I need to go? I don't vote.
No, you don't vote, you don't vote, you're okay there.
Do you want us to step off now?
If there's discussion, we'll step off now, yeah.
I think, well, the process is for the council president to offer anyone to make comments, so I think it's appropriate for everybody to recuse at this point and leave the room.
Yeah, so we recuse, and you're, you're in charge for two seconds.
Okay.
One, two, three.
All right.
Members of the Elks.
Members of the Elks, or if you've applied to the Elks.
Right.
Yeah.
I applied like years ago.
Who's the Elks?
I don't think it's gonna be that long. Something tells me it's not gonna be that long.
You wish. President Vortan?
Okay, so are there any questions or comments from our council members? Alrighty, are there any questions or comments from the public? With that being said, we can invite our council members.
No, no, roll call.
You have to roll call.
Oh, okay.
May I?
Yes.
Rosie, I just have a quick question, sorry.
Yes.
So just so I'm clear, for, just for procedural purposes, I'm just trying to understand, no, actually, never mind, I think I got it.
So we'll take a roll call vote, and whatever the outcome is, if it's, if it succeeds, the resolution passes and we move on. If it doesn't, then it gets deferred to the state, and the state would make the determination.
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to articulate, but I couldn't get the words out of my brain, thank you.
Okay, so I'll proceed with the roll call vote of those present. Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
That's it. I believe we have one, two, three, four, a motion passes.
Okay, the resolution passes. I return the gavel to you, Council President.
Thank you, okay. Looks like we're on to 10388, and over to you, Councilmember Hairston.
Through you, Council President. Like to introduce ID 10388, which authorizes execution of the annual license agreement use of sidewalk for the Roots Steakhouse. So whereas the Harvest Restaurant, also known as Roots Steakhouse, has submitted a sidewalk cafe application for permission to operate a sidewalk cafe on a portion of Springfield Avenue in front of the restaurant and alongside on Maple Street, abutting the premises. This resolution hereby approves the use of a portion of the sidewalk in front of Roots on Springfield Avenue and on Maple Street sidewalk to operate a sidewalk cafe. They've submitted a plan, and this approval is contingent upon the Office of the City Clerk receiving approvals from the Internal Department Services. Of course, we have to approve this resolution before they can obtain that. The steakhouse shall comply with all requirements of the American Disabilities Act, and the sidewalk cafe shall not commence until a permit is issued by the Office of the City Clerk, and they will also be allowed consumption of alcoholic beverages in the public streets, as is the subsection 313 of our city code. And that license for the fee shall be calculated based on the per-table basis in accordance with the city's existing per-table structure. They also will have to provide us with a $1 million liquor liability policy. And with that, I ask for approval of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and on to the third resolution from law and labor, Councilmember Hairston.
Okay. Through you, Council President, introducing ID 10365, which as per our closed session discussion, authorizes extension of sick leave with pay for an employee of the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works. The employee has adequate leave coverage to pay for it, and so I introduce this resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, okay. On to capital projects and community services, Councilmember Levine.[1696.78] Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10269 serves to advertise for assessment hearings. Sometimes when the city does a capital project, in some cases, some small costs come back to the homeowner. The three projects here for these hearings include Butler Parkway, New Providence Avenue, and the Huntley Road area project. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Levine, I apologize. I didn't look at this one before the meeting. Can you just explain to me, or maybe through Aaron, what they are? I just truly missed this one.
This was new to me as well, so I asked our engineer to help describe it, and I can just give a summary sentence, but occasionally, a capital project involving a road, for example, might involve some repair for areas that a homeowner otherwise would pay to repair for themselves, like certain areas of curbing or other things like that, in which case the, you know, there's some money that would go back, you know, come from the homeowner. But we'll let Aaron describe that in a little more detail.
Yes, please, sir.
Certainly, through you, Council President. For various capital improvement projects, when there is either the addition of new curbing where none exists, or where curbing is replaced, or where sidewalks are replaced from damage, no longer for new sidewalk installation, because that was removed a few years ago, that fee is assessed back to the homeowner. So what we have here tonight is three projects that we're closing out from. Construction timeline was 2020, 2021, for which some of those projects had assessments on the homeowners for either sidewalk and/or curbing. So, and what this does is just advertise for the hearing. That would be June 7th, which is the last opportunity for residents who are assessed to come out and speak on behalf of that. We did hold the more informal tax assessor hearing, I forgot the date, but a few weeks back, in which some residents did come out and call, and some adjustments were made.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council on this one? Comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. On to number two, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10174 serves to award a bid to a company called Asphalt Paving Systems to conduct the City of Summit Summit City Cooperative Pricing System 2023 Microsurfacing Program not to exceed $171,108. The members of this cooperative pricing system include Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Florham Park Borough, Milburn Township, New Providence Borough, and the City of Summit. This year, Chatham Borough is a new participant. Their bid price is $3.92 per square yard, and the Summit project includes the application of an estimated 43,650 square yards of polymer modified emulsion and aggregate to various roadways in the city, designed to prolong the life of the paving. This project is funded through the city's Department of Community Services Capital Improvement Budget. There's a list in the packet of the 12 streets that are set for a micro paving this year, and I won't list them all. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Yes?
Yes, through you, Council President. Director Shaker, I was just wondering if you can explain the end of this on page 2, where it says you're requesting common counsel. Sorry, I just want to make sure these two, just give me one second. I just want to make sure these two companies were the same ones. Actually, disregard. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? This is a petroleum product, right? The price is probably, what's the difference in price this year versus the micro paving program last year?
Yes, it's gone up 39 cents per square yard, so it's from 353 to 392. It's gone up essentially since 2018, when it was at $2.69, so, yeah.
I think, sorry, I just realized what my question is. I just noticed, is there a reason why it says a sole bid was submitted by the lone prospective bidder Asphalt Paving Systems in Hamilton, New Jersey, and then it says, this is why I had a question, and then at the bottom, it says Asphalt Paving Systems is in Egg Harbor at a different address. Maybe that's just a different billing address or something, but I just, nothing we need to answer now, but just something I wanted to point out.
Is that Egg Harbor Road in Hamilton?
It's Egg Harbor Road in Hamilton. It's correct.
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, thank you. I thought I was seeing things. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. On to number three, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10386 authorizes additional banner locations for the Hometown Heroes Program. Due to several geographical extension requests over the past few years for the Hometown Heroes Program, DCS is consolidating all locations into one resolution and requesting rescinding and replacement of past locations. The program honors veterans and active-duty members who are residents of Summit or who worked in Summit, who served in one of the five branches of the U.S. Armed Forces with banners. Given the overwhelming support and participation in the Hometown Heroes Program since its inception in February of 2018, we would like to finalize the banner locations to date with the display dates of Memorial Day weekend to August 15th of each year, but not later than Labor Day weekend, and automatically continue its annual recognition until further notice. The location, the 13 locations are listed in the agenda packet. I won't read them all. All costs associated with the purchase of new banners and banner brackets will be funded through the Hometown Heroes Trust account. JCPN L also has a formal process for use of their poles by local government agencies. So the Division of Public Works has started to hang these banners so they can be all hung to meet the Memorial Day deadline, and will schedule their removal as needed. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, and comments from members of council?
Just a real quick plug for Hometown Heroes. I'm the liaison to that committee, and we recently realized that when we, this was the initial bracket that the banners were hung up with. I mean, I went to DPW just to see, because they're requesting, I think, $7,000 more dollars. So these are the original brackets. You'll see them right now. Hometown Heroes will be needing some more money for the new brackets, which are like this, which just, I just thought it would be kind of cool to show the community what they're actually, how they're hung, and it does make sense, but I've had to go down to DPW just to make sure. But thank you, Councilmember Levine, for doing this, and thank you for everybody that is contributing and making Hometown Heroes happen. So thank you.
Thank you. If someone wanted to donate, could they do that through the city website?
Yes, they could.
Excellent, excellent. Comments from members of council?
Thank you for your words, Councilmember Hamlet, and for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Comments?
I had one other thing. So this has been going on since 2018, and the reason we have this whole list is because we keep getting more banners, which is great news. So if you know someone who wants, who's served in the military or is currently serving, there is information on the city's website about how to apply, and so it's, we've now, I believe we have over 200 members of, either former members in the military or active duty. Is that correct?
I have to look at the exact number in my notes, but this year, we have 13 nominees, I believe, and two are on active duty right now, so I'm looking forward to actually speaking with all of them in the next couple of weeks and meeting all of them.
Excellent. Okay, comments from members of the public? Nope. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And last one, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, resolution number 10390 serves to declare vacancy in the Department of Community Services, the Division of Public Works, and the Buildings and Grounds Unit for a part-time custodian. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And last resolution comes from Community Programs and Parking Services, Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to introduce resolution number 10319. This resolution will authorize special event parking to the LPGA golf tournament being held from June 19th to the 25th. The LPGA will hold their golf tournament at Boulter Saw Country Club and plans to use the shuttle buses to transport people from Summit to Springfield to accommodate parkers for this very special event. I would like to move this resolution.
In a second.
Okay, comments from members of council?
I had one question about it. I'm just wondering how we are going, if we have an idea of how many people will be using the parking and how we're going to make sure that this doesn't, I think Rita is gesturing.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I'm wondering how we will know how many people are going to be using it. Will there be a reservation system for this as well, and how do we avoid inconveniencing our commuters and city parkers?
Yes. Through you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. This is on the scale of about a quarter of the normal PGA, and I ran two of the PGAs. In the last PGA, right before the PGA, they had off-site parking locations for all their honorees that were coming to the golf tournament. They all flooded out. So the last PGA, they all came to Summit. This is in preparation, God forbid, if people need to come here. There is no parking available in Summit for the PGA. They can take a train in and then get on the shuttle bus. This is just in case if someone does drive here from a town that has a train line, is to then charge them a special event fee. As far as managing it goes, we're not sure about a reservation platform yet, because they have to show a PGA ticket even to us to show that that's why they're here. So the way I will manage it is, obviously, we have outside lots, like the K Lot, the Tier Garage. That's why this resolution is adding the Tier Garage to that list of previous ordinance, so that I have the flexibility. Because my main concern is Tuesday through Thursday, that is our biggest time of commuting and downtown employees. The schools will be out at that time, so that'll help a little bit, but rest assured, no resident or downtown employee will be put out of the parking. So again, it's day by day that I will manage it with my staff.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
My recollection, Rita, the last time, right, is that, and it was, we had way more people parking in Summit at the time.
Oh, yes.
Way before COVID, right? It was not, I did not get one complaint. It was managed very smoothly.
Thank you.
For the most part, people take the train in.
That's correct.
Because they're having a big day, they're partying, they don't want to be driving.
Exactly.
So it's not like we've got a lot of parking that's happening in Summit, but there's some, and you've got to have, this is kind of like a contingency.
It is, because there are people that will drive here, even though there is no parking, per se, but like a town like Mountainside, they don't have a train line. They're going to drive to Summit and take the shuttle bus. It's just going to happen, so I have to be prepared for that.
Right.
But the most part is people will take the train to come to Summit, because we're not advertising that there's any parking in Summit. This is just if someone does decide to drive here, we have a mechanism to tell them where they can park and to manage it properly, and then also to increase the fee, which the residents will only be charged $4, just so that everyone knows, normal parking rate, but any other non-resident will be charged $20 each day, each car.
And it's not, it's a great tournament, but it's not the thousands that come to the PGA.
Oh, no. No. Thank you, God, no. I'll be retired for the next one. I'm done, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rita. Other council member comments? Comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, and we're on to the consent agenda. Usually, we take this as a whole. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out and talk about individually? Nope. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the entire consent agenda?
So good.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. We are done with our formal agenda. Thanks to everyone who's here and who's engaged on the things we've discussed so far. We're appreciative of those who would like to share their comments on things that are not on the agenda, and again ask that we all be respectful of each other by limiting the comments to about three minutes. So we're ready for public comments. Come on up. Come on up.
Okay, not short, people friendly. There we go. Okay. Mayor Joe Mucucci DeFonso, 12 Mrs. Radist, when you were inaugurated as mayor, and I won't, for sake of time, I'll just read the last paragraph, "I promise to be a visible advocate for all of Summit. To me, that means everything from cultivating our corporate neighbors so that they continue to provide jobs, revenue, and services to Summit, to calmly sitting with the county to make sure we get our fair share, to making sure Summit delivers for our youth as well as our seniors. It also means taking a strong and visible leadership role when our community faces challenges, even those that are unforeseeable and pounding the table when needed." So I have a question. I took care of my mother for five years, okay? She lives on a main road. She lives on Springfield Avenue, directly across from Bryant Park, and I would walk out of her house at 11 o'clock at night, and there would be cars parked outside. Whose car they are, I have no idea. I grew up in this neighborhood. I grew up in that house. I have no idea who they are. And unbeknownst to me, at some point, the county decided to allow the park to be open 24/7, but that's another matter. So when I walk out of my mother's house at 11 o'clock at night after I put her to bed, and my father died in 2017, so she's there by herself. We live back to back. I would see somebody outside, one particular Sunday night at 11 o'clock, people pull up, they're having a pizza outside her house. So I call the cops. What's going on? There's nothing we can do. Another time, a couple was parked, they had their vehicles parked in the park. They were on a motorcycle. They were in the street, again, arguing 11 o'clock at night. There's nothing we can do. How is it that this, and I've heard the safety of the residents of this town mentioned many times tonight, how is it that I was told, and I even made an appointment with the chief of police, and I was told also by him, there's nothing we can do. How is it that the minute Ronnie Martin retired, that all of a sudden now, there's nothing we can do? There's somebody outside my mother's house? Oh, I'm sorry, there's nothing. How is that happened? What happened? What changed?
I honestly don't know, but I'm more than happy to discuss it with you in person.
Okay, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll be in my office tomorrow. In the morning, we can talk on the phone, or you can come in, or we can make an appointment at your convenience.
I'll make an appointment, because I have actually errands to run tomorrow.
That's fine. My city website is nradis@cityofsummit.org. Email me, and I'm happy to make an appointment with you, and perhaps we'll have the police involved with the conversation as well.
All right.
Because I can't honestly answer that question now, but I'm more than happy to sit down with you.
My concern was, how do I know that everybody, somebody could be watching my actions every night as I go to put my mom to bed, and I'm leaving to go home. How do I know somebody's not watching her house?
Sure.
She was robbed once already. How do I know somebody's not watching what I'm doing, watching my actions, and they're going to come rob her as soon as I walk out the door? How do I know that? And I said that to the cops, and I said that to the chief of police. Nobody has an answer for me.
All right, well, let's talk about it at your convenience.
Okay.
Okay.
My second issue is this, whose decision was it to bring a drag show here on June 2nd?
Is that the Pride Day? That's been happening for a couple of years, and my presumption is through the Department of Community Programs.
Through the community programs, okay. Did anybody do any kind of research before they brought something so controversial here?
I'm sure they did.
They did?
And I know that there are, while some people don't like it, there are many others that do.
Okay, well, make a comment. This was, this is my research, okay? American Academy of Pediatrics, transgender adolescent suicide behavior published March 2021. Effective screening and treatment to reduce suicide risk among sexual and gender minority youth, published May 2022. Ensuring comprehensive care and support for transgender and gender diverse children and adolescents. Transgender pornography arrests. Trans inmate who filmed sexual abuse of senior-old daughter housed in troubled New Jersey prison. Central PriA drag queen activist charged with 25 counts of child pornography.
So Ms. DeFonso, you're at about four and a half minutes. I'm going to ask you to just wrap up.
And I'm going to exercise my 18 USC 242.
So if you have specific questions about this?
Oh, what?
I think you should email them, and we can get them to the appropriate department.
Transgender New Hampshire dem in jail in stalking charges.
Ms. DeFonso.
New York, I'm not done yet.
Ms. DeFonso, excuse me.
New York City transgender activist arrested for attempting to engage in sex with a minor by Alex Schimmel.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Transgender former cop arrested after allegedly befriending.
Excuse me.
Transgender Colorado is arrested over plot to shear up three schools and churches by cops who found detailed plans in Communist manifesto. New Jersey woman, that was the one I read already.
Chief, can you please?
Trans Uber YouTube star charged with over possession of child abuse images. I would pray to God. I heard you. I heard you. I heard you. Okay. I'm going to suggest you listen to the, watch the following documentaries. The fatherless epidemic.
Ms. DeFonso.
Sound of freedom and growing up trails.
Email in.
You're not the only one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Palowski, Three Crest Acre Court. I'm fortunate to have lived in Summit for nearly 40 years now, and in my opinion, there's no better place to be a kid, to be an adult, to raise children, or just to live. For decades now, I've encouraged work colleagues... I'm fortunate to have lived in Summit for nearly 40 years now, and in my opinion, there's no better place to be a kid, to be an adult, to raise children, or just to live. For decades now, I've encouraged work colleagues, friends, and generally anyone who'll listen, those looking to make a move in or to New Jersey to consider Summit. When they ask me why, my answer's not just the character and layout of the city, but the character of the people. We have an awesome mix of longtime and new residents who all want a great place to be a family alongside neighbors who are friends and often become family before too long. Summit's collective character revealed itself to me recently, as I've spoken to a great number of Hill City residents about their concerns. Our neighbors from all over the city are horrified about the situation on Ashwood Court. For anyone who's not familiar with Ashwood Court, it's a cul-de-sac in East Summit. The city and Habitat for Humanity have been constructing two buildings over the last year or so on what was city property adjacent to Ashwood Court, on the site of the old Italian America Club, which has a Morris Avenue address. Once upon a time, there was a retaining wall between what I'll call the new development and Ashwood Court. On the Ashwood side, the retaining wall was contiguous and protected a flat stretch of green grass where neighborhood children played. I'm sure young Council President Vartan spent many joyful times on that beautiful stretch when visiting his grandparents. Now it looks like this. My understanding is that the city and Habitat have an agreement with the residents to restore this area to its former state, with the exception of the non-ADA compliant walkway up the middle. Does that include removing the dirt dumped on the area from the construction site? Does it include bringing the walkway up to code? As interested as I am in the answers to those questions, they're really not my questions. My question is, what's the holdup? We have a construction site that's not on Ashwood Court. Why would Ashwood Court, why Ashwood Court had to be disturbed in the first place is beyond me, but now that it has, why can't we put it back together? Kids still play on Ashwood Court, and this, this is not safe. There's no fence around the construction site. There's no fence around the construction debris littering the area near the walk. The city wouldn't let a private citizen get away with this nonsense, so why has the city let this go on for so long? If it's Habitat's responsibility, Habitat should shift gears and concentrate on repairing Ashwood Court before it continues with the new development. It should put up a temporary fence until it is able to put up the agreed-upon permanent fence. It should replace the retaining wall it tore down in its entirety and restore the ground to its prior state. And if Habitat refuses to do it, the city ought to do it and send Habitat the bill. We made the good people on Ashwood Court promises. It's time the city showed the character I've bragged about for so long and rectify the situation. We're long overdue.
Thank you. Do we want to, well, okay, so there's, there's, yeah, I will talk about, I will talk about Ashwood Court for a minute. So this is my, this is my neighborhood. We've heard concerns and appreciate the comments from those who have reached out to council members directly. There are three things happening on Ashwood Court. The first is, there's private property owners with issues that are being worked through with legal professionals and with city staff. The second is, the enforcement of requirements related to the construction site has to be handled by the city's construction and building office, and that has to continue. And, and the third is, there's the settlement agreement between the city, the residents of Ashwood Court, and Habitat about additional housing units. And we recognize it's a small piece of property. We've discussed it in closed session, and, you know, we, we have, we have a responsibility as a, as a council to determine what our options are there. We, we have to have our engineering team look at the area, determine what options we have, and then make a recommendation to council about what's possible there. We have to do our due diligence and make a decision on how to move forward after further discussion and consideration as a governing body. So that's what I want to say about Ashwood Court at this moment. Okay, other comments from council, from the public?
Sorry. Today was a really bad day for us. So speaking to the settlement agreement, I just want to read part of it that you, Mayor Radis, signed. "As necessary, the city of Summit, Morris, Habitat for Humanity, and the developer of the two affordable units within the cul-de-sac extension shall replace, repair, stabilize the existing retaining wall and associated soil in the rear of the cul-de-sac extension and within the easement areas incident to any removal or disturbance of same in accordance with all the laws and regulations." My wall is one of the, is part of that easement, okay? And we all know that. Now, when Habitat tore my wall down, what they did was, they used a backhoe. They literally just tore it down, and with that, they cracked more of the wall. We're at a year, almost a year now, of my wall not being repaired. The bottom line is, is that now, they're doing work behind my house, okay? They are, and because there are no zoning laws for affordable housing, they're like six feet from my property line, and they are going back there with backhoes, heavy equipment and whatnot. My wall is more damaged now than what they initially did. Fast forward, we spoke to Mr. Giacobi off the record. Thank you. New Jersey American Water came. However, nobody from the city reached out to us to let us know they were coming. Just so happens that my husband knows the foreman on the job, and he contacted my husband, and that's how we knew New Jersey American Water was coming. They did a beautiful job. New Jersey American Water reached out to Habitat for Humanity to let them know that they were coming as a courtesy. And Habitat for Humanity turned around and said, "Replace the wall, it's your job." Well, New Jersey American Water took pre-construction video, and the wall was not there when they showed up, and I witnessed Habitat tear it down. At the end of the day, okay, again, nobody's reached out to us from the city to let us know what's going on. So today, I happen to be home, because Habitat's MO is, is that they wait for me to leave, bring my daughter to school, and then they show up, or I happen to come home, and I either have volunteers on my lawn, construction workers, and this has been going on all year. This is not the way to do business, okay? Now, I've reached out to other council members expressing my concern at how my wall is more damaged, and they cracked my wall further out. So today, I happen to be home, because I'm cleaning out my, my father's house since he passed. And my husband happened to be home today. And I see Habitat for Humanity contractors on the sidewalk, and what they're doing is, they're pointing to my wall, and they're trying to reach over, and they're trying to measure my wall. So my husband walked over and asked them, "What are you doing? Are you going to replace the wall? What portion of the wall? We have no knowledge of any of this." Well, that led to them not saying they're only replacing a portion of the wall, it's not part of the settlement agreement. We, my husband and, and the contractors went back and forth, it got heated, they called the cops on my, my husband. So next thing you know, the cops are at my house. My two young kids are seeing this, and this is where we're at now. Now, we are not allowed to talk to Habitat, which is no problem, because we never did before, and they're not allowed to talk to us, which is not a problem, because they never did before. But at the end of the day, I still, I should know what is going on with my property. I should be notified beforehand, okay? And at the end of the day, New Jersey American Water did a great job, and they, they fixed my lawn, they fixed what they were here to do, and now, because New Jersey American Water and Habitat, Habitat can't work with anybody, now they're going to tear up my lawn again to replace the wall, which is going to be half-assed, because at the end of the day, what they do is, they wait for me to leave. So if they're not coming on my property to actually take measurements and figure out what is needed to replace, okay? How are they going to actually come on my property to fix it? And how are we to know when they're going to fix it, and what part of my property?
Ms. Gaglano, we, I want to ask you to wrap up, because I think what would needs to happen, and what's going to continue to happen, is that we're going to coordinate closely with you.
Okay, all right, excuse me. I've heard that, I've heard it, I've heard it, and I never hear anything.
So.
I've reached out to Mayor Radis.
Yes.
I never heard anything back. I've never heard anything back.
Ma'am, you were in my office, for the first time I heard about this, the issues you were having was about a month and a half or so ago. I, you, was it you and my office?
I reached out to you about my deed. I never heard anything back.
No, no, that's, well, I'm not going to argue with you.
No, you, you never contacted me.
Because I gave it to the lawyers. I can't fix your deed.
I didn't ask you to fix my deed, but you could have reached out to me and said, "Listen, the, the issue is with the attorneys." But don't you think that somebody from the city should contact me and let me know what's going on?
I presume that they did. People come.
Who?
So, Ms. Gaglano, so we have a.
We need, we need to know, we need, we understand that this is a big issue, and Habitat has to be brought to the table, and you have to, and we have to fix this. We do know that, and we are truly trying. And NJ American Water, they showed up, they did a good job, but quite frankly, they often don't tell us when they're going to do work in the city. That's one of the things that Aaron Schreger struggles with all the time, because utilities don't even let us know, let alone individuals, so.
But Habitat is in contact with you guys.
Not all the time, ma'am, no.
We have a, we have a very.
But Mr. Giacobi was reaching out to them to address the issue. I was told off the record that Mr. Giacobi would disseminate information through Matt Delory. I got nothing.
So, we have a clear.
Thank you.
May I make a quick comment?
And also, at the end of the day, I, I think we, at this point, we may need to explore other options of how to address this issue.
Okay, thank you.
May I make a quick comment, Council President?
Yes.
For you. I just wanted to say how glad I am that you broached this topic in our closed session today, and our, we as a council were able to have a very productive discussion about it.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment as well.
Yep.
Thank you, Council President, for speaking about this in closed session, and Council Member Levine, thank you for your comments tonight as well. I can see it in your, I can see in your face that you're frustrated, and I think we all are frustrated. I can see it, and alls I can do is apologize. I would have never voted to put two affordable housing units there, and I would have never, ever. If you walk down there, it just doesn't fit. I really think, I really think it just doesn't fit. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I think at the, we're, is it okay to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just clearing my.
Yeah. You know what? This is a situation Dealey and I are new, so I, I know that there have been, there are council members that have been in this table for a long time. I, there are no words, and we absolutely will fix this as a city. Nobody should be going through this, and not for a year. So whatever our feelings are in terms of voting or not voting, we need to fix the issue. So, I, I mean, I'm sorry. I think, I think we're all sorry, so.
If I could say one thing? Mr. Rogers and I are diligently working on it, as I told the resident, Ms. Gaglano, as I told you, we are working on it, we are pursuing it on different levels. I can't reveal what we're doing, but we are actively working on it, and we started doing it the day after the last meeting.
Yes, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you.
And we're familiar, very familiar with the settlement agreement and what we can do to enforce it.
I, I know, this is a very, this is a very frustrating issue, and there's, there's going to be very little that anybody here can do about this tonight, and for that, I am sorry. I know there are a lot of different people working on this in a lot of different ways. So I, I'm, I, I think we have to let that continue. Okay, other comments from the community?
All right. Vernon Williams, 116 Glenside Avenue, clergy of Fountain Baptist Church. I want to say to the council that as you are looking, you've approved your budget, we are grateful that Summit is a very safe place to live. The police and public safety and health have done an awesome job. If you are looking to add additional public safety and health employees, I would ask that you would consider social services, where you would bring on more of those who can handle mental health issues within the community and alleviate some of the, the issues for, mental health issues for our men and women in blue. That would probably be a more appropriate thing to, to look at. Summit is a very safe city. Summit is, according to the, the statistics that Chief Zakorski had given a few months ago, Summit is below, well below the national average in crime statistics, as well as New Jersey, and so we are grateful for that. The final thing that I would add is that Fountain Baptist Church is signing on to be a proud sponsor of the June 2nd Pride celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend.
Hi, Robyn Dobyshevsky, for Ashwood Court. I just want to say, you can look at all those pictures, there is an overgrown mess in that area. Three, you know, three-foot-high grass, which I know if it was on my house, I would not be able to get away with that. So it's just making a bad situation even worse, that we have to stare at the mess, and now we have an overgrown mess that we're staring at. So I do hope that at least that can be taken care of in the short term, until the rest is resolved.
Thank you.
Hi, Bonnie Morrison, Rotary Drive. First of all, I'm very heartened to hear what, that you're all taking it so seriously about what's going on at Ashwood Court, because what those residents have been through is just horrific. But on a different subject, it's now been more than six months since residents for Summit presented an alternate proposal for the Broad Street West redevelopment. Can we please have an update on where things stand, and is there a timetable for when the public can expect information? Thank you.
Sure. Michael, I like, Michael was going to be our guy on that. So, sorry, so, so where we are is, the city is still in negotiation with, with the designated, the conditionally designated developers. The Broad Street West Financial Advisory Committee met last Friday, and a report of that meeting is going to be disseminated to council tomorrow, and we are hoping to have an update for the community very soon. I, every time with Broad Street, we say even a guess at when we can give an update, it winds up being totally wrong. So I, I want to, I want to not do that yet, and, and so I apologize for that. I think, I think reasonably, within the next several weeks, we're going to have some decisions to make. Let's put it that way. Okay. Next up.
Good evening. I'm Gil Orin, 45 Wallace Road. Excuse me. I have my law practice in a building downtown on Beechwood Road. These are my last comments on Maple Street. I'm concerned. For an ordinance, for a road to be closed for more than 48 hours, there are two statutes that make it very clear that they are, the ordinance that is adopted to do that requires approval by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the commissioner. If you recall, I asked you about that. You said, "We did have approval." "We did not." You apologized, and I accepted that. And at the last meeting, Administrator Rogers gave a 43-page apology that said, basically, "We did not get approval." Councilwoman Allen had apologized when she learned that that occurred, because without that approval, the statute is very clear, the ordinance has no force of effect. It's illegal. And so for six months, we closed it, you closed it, last year, without the approval of, of New Jersey Department of Transportation. It's, "Well, what, what's the harm? We've been through this before, and I'm shocked that we didn't get approval." Milburn borrowed our ordinance, copied it, did the due diligence required that our city solicitor said is arduous in a short period of time, had their engineer certificated. in a short period of time, had their engineer certified, and got approval. In the report, they called Summit. How are you doing with your, uh, dot application? The answer was, we don't think we need it. And that, this is before, this is early in the, in the summer, before the road was closed. Now, now it's closed. I, there's a disconnect here. I was at the meeting, May 3rd, when you approved that. And one council person pointed to someone in the audience and said, Tony, it's got to be legal, and it's got to be safe. It's not legal. The statute is very clear. It has no force in effect. And I'm surprised at Summit. They passed it. They knew what to do. They used our ordinance. And we did not, and, um, you're out of the room. I'm referring to your apology last week, or last council meeting. Forty-three pages, I read it all.
Gil, I'm going to ask you to start wrapping up, please. I appreciate your comments.
I think I've made my point.
Thank you.
And I want to know why there's a disconnect between the council and the staff, I guess. We get apologies from the city administrator. We get apologies from the council president. And we get apologies appropriately from a member that voted for it and found out that it's, that it, that it was not legally passed. I'm concerned.
Thank you.
No answer?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council President?
Yep.
May I repeat what was said last council meeting? When, in your absence, I presided, and our Solicitor General said that the council did not do anything illegal?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Kevin McGoye, Woodland Avenue. I just wanted to talk about the last meeting. I was actually kind of depressed by it. Again, you were putting all of the blame on the city staff, which I think is unfair. There's also, I think, a little bit of nuance between what's illegal and what's criminal. Nobody was ever saying that the council acted criminally. Nobody was expecting anybody to go to jail. But for a fact, the street was closed unlawfully. There was not a legal ability to close the street with what we did. It was a simple mistake. We can say that. But in the ordinance, and I also want to make clear, the last council meeting, I didn't like the way it was set up where you had Matt Giacobi give a speech for you. I think a lot of people saw that as a legal opinion. And what I think the public and residents don't understand is, Matt's client is all of you. We are not his clients. So, you're not going to get Matt to ever say his client did something illegal. That's literally like having an defense attorney tell you that his clients did something illegal. That's not going to be the case. When you look at the ordinance, I'm not saying you did anything illegal, okay? Saying that the street was closed unlawfully, illegally. When Matt says you did nothing wrong, Matt says that you can rely upon that work was done, that the due diligence was done. But the problem with it is, when you read the ordinance, the ordinance says common council fines. And then it has the five requirements for it to be a pedestrian mall. And my question to you is, how did you find that when there is no due diligence to support it? Now, I can also say that, okay, you know, it's, you didn't know, easy mistake. But you had people in here, that if you go back to that May 5th meeting before you voted on it, you had people including Gil Orrin. There is a Paris individual who explained how there was no back alley access to three of the buildings. And in the ordinance that you wrote, that you said you found, one of the conditions in there is that this other buildings can, can be serviced by other streets or back alleys. Those three buildings could not do either, any of those. So, you had residents that were informed. And I think at the end of last meeting, Susan Hairston liked to say, we don't want, we're not going to listen to the people who just come in here, the same people who come in here. That's fine, as long as they're not giving you facts. When we're giving you facts, I don't care if you like us or don't like us. You should listen to them and go, okay, does what they're saying, is what they're saying makes sense? You shouldn't read in their intentions, oh, this person's really against this or that. If we're saying things that make sense and have validity, you don't have to agree with the conclusions. But don't dismiss the facts that we're presenting. So, I think that whether or not Giacobi said you did something illegal or not legal, he's never going to tell us that anyway, and nobody's saying that. But what's depressing is, even at this stage, you can stand up there and say, we did nothing wrong.
Kevin.
You absolutely did.
Kevin, we appreciate your comments, it's.
Okay, and then one other thing.
We're going to have.
When you just talked about the due diligence for Ashwood Court now.
Can we ask you to wrap up?
What was the due diligence before, when somebody decided to agree to put two units in that space? It doesn't make any sense. Because I think that's important, and it goes back to the lack of due diligence on everything you decide.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
I don't think we want to discuss the settlement agreement. Because it's not, I don't, it's not, is it a public document? I don't know. Uh, it is. So, all right, so, in the document, it doesn't say two units. It says that the, the city reserves, it has the right. And the people that signed this settlement agreement, everyone, said they has the right to consider what's going on there. It was, it was a placeholder, it wasn't decided yet. And it's still, we're still, we had, as, as Councilman, Council President said, we are going to be looking at this and discussing it. It's not over. And there's a lot to look at here. So, you know, those of us who were around when that agreement was signed understands what was happening at the time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Janal Boyer, 204 Morris Avenue. I wish you can write an ordinance for the Pollen, because my allergies are ridiculous. So, so bear with me. Councilperson Levine, the license plate readers, I think they are amazing. I think they are the future, and I agree with you. There is some responsibility and due diligence. And maybe some kind of audits need to happen. But I also think we could take the license plate readers a step further with the inclusion of AI. It can help with traffic management. It can help with other things when we're having threat assessments. And, you know, these are non-discriminatory things when computers are involved. It really just looks at patterns. And as a former law enforcement person and someone that does security, when people are doing things wrong, they deviate from normal behavior. So, I think there's something to look at. And I know Chief Zakorski, I don't think he's here. Yes. So, one of the things about the license plate readers is that they have a lot of data that they have. And if you don't have anyone reading that data, then there's a functionality that you're missing out on. So, maybe we can look into having an analyst come in too, right, and viewing that data so that we are, um, you know, more optimal in that use. But I, uh, I see here tonight that our friends from, uh, I was, Broad Street are here. Welcome. So, I came down to the bus stop the other day. Boots on the groundwork is the good detective that I am. And I met Fisher, Michelle, Kevin, and Robert. Hi, Robert, how you doing, buddy? Robert's very soft-spoken. And we talked about why they, or where they are. And, you know, what came to mind is that, you know, my own life, um, if it wasn't for welfare in Newark or whatever, I would have been out on the street too with my mother, right? But she worked really hard to get out of that situation. So, I have a soft spot for that. Now, homelessness isn't a one-size-fits-all situation, right? Every person is unique. They all have different issues. And the people here, their issue is red tape. And I don't understand why there's so much bureaucracy to get people into a, a home. And I think as politicians, um, one phone call could probably get them into a home. Just saying. If it was me, I could probably do it. But then there's another part to it where, I know, there's another part to it where even they feel unsafe about some other homeless people that they come into contact with. And those are the folks that are criminals, right? Those are the folks that are doing drugs. You know, there are, we, in this country, we're dealing with fentanyl, right? We're dealing with heroin. And these things come up from Newark, and they come up to Summit. And the people, the homeless people, they're not getting on the train and going back to Newark to get money. Where are they going to get it from? Your homes, right? Your backyards or whatever. You know, our children walk through the train station, they walk at night and everything else.
Mr. Boyer, we appreciate your comments. We're going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Yeah, I'm almost done. So, I think we need to be mindful of all different, uh, you know, sides of it. You know, there is a, there's a dark side to it as well. And I think, uh, we could just, we could just do better. And I think our law enforcement should, should, uh, should really be looking into a lot of the, uh, maybe the drug use and everything, you know? Because as someone said, our kids are watching, so we just got to be careful with that. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Make a comment?
Yep.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Boyer. I was a little bit frustrated when the COC vote, when I was really trying to, what I've learned, now that I bought Robert's rules. What I should have said for the COC was, let's postpone it for a few weeks. And that would have allowed all of us to have some dialogue. When I moved to table it, which, as a council member here for 100 days, that didn't really allow us to have any discussion. So, now that I've got my new handy book, we're going to do things right. But it was emotional for me to hear, uh, members of the interfaith community and members in general putting the pressure on, on me to just postpone it for a few weeks when I wasn't sure of, um, of all of the information. So, uh, last Saturday, I, I went with my friend, uh, who's may or may not be sitting in this room, and I went to go talk to our friends. And I, it was probably one of the more nervous things that I've ever done. I, I think, I think most of you, some of you guys might be even more educated than me, which is, you know, shocking and, and really fun to learn. And I think I, I took the approach of what I would have done, just like I was in the military. Just go talk to people. It's not that difficult. See what's going on. I met a veteran who didn't have his, who couldn't find his DD 214. We're working on it now. Sue, thank you for your service. What you have done in helping members of the community is, is exceptional, and they, they all mentioned, mentioned you. The, this, I do have a point. I reached, after I've met with our friends, um, that are here today, I reached out to Keith Kennard, and I also reached out to Rich Uniki. And I discussed a lot of the conversations that I had with certain people. And one of the things that Rich Uniki and I talked about was whether or not our housing vouchers can be used outside of Summit. So, I reached out to Keith Kennard, and, um, he explained to me that housing choice vouchers are generally portable, and they can be used by a recipient anywhere in the United States. However, there are two exceptions. And so, I was wondering where our housing vouchers could be used. And then the second comment I had to that is, I've emailed the COC Director, and then I was sent to another COC Director, and I haven't had any information about the meeting on the 18th. So, if we could maybe, uh, there's supposed to be a meeting on Thursday that I was going to attend, but I've reached out to both Ms. Topolowski. When I reached out to her email address, there was another person, and I have not heard back yet. So, thank you. And thank you for, for coming tonight.
Thank you. So, two, two quick things. So, the housing vouchers, it is a question I would have to direct back to Keith. I don't know the answer to that right now. And then, I know we have the information for the meeting on Thursday. Andy, and you can send that around to everybody tomorrow. Yep, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Council President?
Yeah.
Do we need to worry about a quorum, though, if we're more than?
Yeah. Right?
Our attorney advises on that.
I mean, so, the question is whether, the question is whether, question, whether more than a quorum of council members can be present on the COC Zoom conversation on Thursday morning. And I think, my guess would be, the answer is if we're not all participating, we can all be there.
None of you should be participating. If you're just listening to the information and you're not participating, it'd be like if you went to, um, uh, something at the high school. The high school that the school is putting on a drug form or something for the kids, and you just went there. You're not participating.
Yeah.
If you got to start participating, then it has to be noticed.
Okay, so, we're, we're going to probably want at least a council member to be participating. So, let's have a follow-up conversation about that offline, and we'll, we'll work on that.
So, they can't have more than three?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, you guys will figure that out?
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Because I think you should participate.
Yeah.
And, and so, no more than three should go.
Yes, I agree.
Then you don't have to notice it.
Agreed.
But just to clarify, so, nobody knows right now about the housing vouchers? Is that, I just, is, I just, I don't understand how they work.
So, so the Housing Authority voucher system and the, as, and the Housing Authority's administrative responsibilities are actually a shared service with Madison's Housing Authority as well. So, Keith would be the person that I would go to, to get that question answered about specific, about a specific type of voucher. I would, I, I don't have that answer for, for right now.
Through you, Council President.
Yep.
The Housing Authority's vouchers go with the individual who applies for them, the vouchers.
Right, but it, but it depends on the, what voucher they're getting, right?
Different types, and they go in different locations.
It's project-based, and then the other ones.
Yeah, okay.
Council President, through you, two questions. One, I thought we've given vouchers to, to, um, sorry, I'm choking on a mint. I thought we've given vouchers out. And if we have, how is that any different? Excuse me. Don't eat mints on thee.
I, I don't think anybody here is going to be able to answer a specific question about the vouchers. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be shutting it down. I just think Keith's the person to talk to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm under the impression we've given out vouchers before. And through you, Council President, Councilman Miniger, if we have the information for the COC, can we just announce it here? Because I feel like this, it's a, it's a.
It's just the, it's just the, the time of the meeting.
Right. Meaning, um, it's a public meeting, right? I mean, everybody can go. So, if anybody in the room wants to go to the meeting, they can also go to the COC.
I'm not sure that it is.
I don't know.
I, I, we need to clarify that.
I don't think it is a pri, a public meeting in that way.
We need to, we need to clarify that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Richard Ford, live on Constantine Place. I also work in Chatham, right over on Watchung Avenue. So, uh, I'm a driver, and I spend a lot of time on the road. So, my commute from Constantine Place to, into Chatham, and then from work, during work hours, from Chatham to Route 24. I'd like to know, where are our police? There are the, the running of red lights, people texting on phones. From Constantine Place to Kent Place Boulevard, I see children walking to school every morning, and people running red lights. It's a, it's unlawful. Like, it's, it's, it's out of control. Where is the police department?
The chief of police is behind you?
Okay.
He's coming up.
He's coming.
I mean, there's, there's, there's seven cars sitting outside right now. Why are they not controlling our streets?
Uh, so, Chief, do you want to, do you want to?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, first of all, you got to put people in them. I'm not trying to be a wise guy.
Oh, oh, God.
We make 700 motor vehicle stops a month. So, um, we're out there. You might not see us, but 700 stops.
Yeah. I mean, I, eight hours a day, I commute, I drive back and forth from, you know, Watchung Avenue to Chatham to 24. And I see, and this isn't just like a one-day thing, this is every day, this is what I do. And I see no police in that area. So, from my house to, then, during an eight-hour workshop, from driving from Commerce, well, around Commerce Street to, uh, 24, I, I never see a cop driving around doing anything. Like, why is there no police presence? They need to be in, the, the police need to be on the streets to protect our streets.
Okay.
Okay, car thefts, why are they happening? Because there's no police on the streets. People running red lights, texting while they're driving, speeding. That, that ain't even worth mentioning, because 50 mile an hour and 35 is, I'd say, pretty commonplace in Summit. So, that's, that's all I'd like to know, is where is the police? Why are they not out there?
Well, we're trying to do better to be, uh, visible to you, but we are out there. And just so you know, those cars that are parked out front, those cars are, um, not our patrol vehicles. They're used for the special details on construction sites. Our patrol vehicles are parked underneath the building.
I mean, because, like, one of my concerns is.
Thank you, sir. So, so, we want to, it may make sense to have, perhaps, you guys connect via email, or you can have a conversation.
There's one more public point I want to make. You know, there was a lot of stats.
So, so, we can't, nobody at home can hear you?
Oh, sorry.
So.
There was a lot of statistics introduced today. And people mentioned how, you know, averages and stuff like, I don't care about that. What I care about is when my wife, who's a dog walker in town, is afraid to go to certain areas, and I have to go with her at night. certain areas and I have to go with her at night, to go to somebody's house to walk their dog because she's afraid of getting carjacked. To me, this is more of a concern than, you know, statistics and somebody online saying that Summit's a, a safe town. You know, that doesn't, doesn't help.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Chief. Okay.
Tara Gagliano, Success with Court. Mayor Radus, to your point about the settlement, my parents were a part of that settlement agreement, not, not me.
I understand.
And my mother died in the middle of that agreement. My dad had Parkinson's at the end of that agreement, had no clue what was going on. So do I think he was taken advantage of? Yeah. Do I think that was a good settlement agreement? No. And also, that's just my opinion, but at the end of the day, yeah, that settlement agreement gave the city of Summit a right for more affordable housing units on a postage stamp. Could you do it? Yes. Is it the right thing to do? No, I don't think so. But-
And that's what we need to look into.
My other thing, my, my other, and I appreciate you doing your due diligence and speaking at it, about this as a council, because it seriously affects my property. Okay? Mr. Giacobi, I just wanted you to know that when the cops showed up today, we informed them to inform Habitat, they're not to step foot on our property until we have some kind of a plan or awareness of what their intention is. And it's approved by us. Okay? Just wanted you to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor. Lot going on here this evening. Fred Honold, 133 Summit Avenue. I just want to reflect on the two prior comments, both by Jamal and Councilwoman Hamlet, about the issue with those that are residing in Summit in the train station and at the bus stops. And it happened to be me who was walking through the train station last Friday at about four o'clock. And by the way, I'm through the train station often these days, from the north side over to the Y and the library. I've gotten to a good chance to know the people here, very respectful, very peaceful, those however you refer to them, unhoused, homeless, whatever the proper moniker is. But the interesting thing is when I walked out at four o'clock on Friday and ran into Councilwoman Hamlet, she said she wanted to see them, but she was very nervous. So I said, I'll walk with you. And we actually did a tour of the three different bus stops. We talked to, we introduced ourselves, we talked to Ken from Union and One, we talked to John, former military, from Short Hills and another. And then we talked to four, being Ken, being Robert, being Fisher and being James. And at each stop, we asked them about if they've had any contact from the town, elected or official. And they said the police were excellent, very polite, engaged them. They said also New Jersey Transit as well, similar. And I should add that the first person they've ever had personal interaction with was Councilwoman Hamlet last Friday, the first person ever to approach them. So I know there's been a lot of discussion around COC and how to handle it, but again, I would invite all of you to get to know the constituency here that we're looking to take care of. And one of the gentlemen, Ken, after we were talking, he said, we said, what more can we do? He said, what can we do for you in return? And I thought that was a class act. So I just wanted to share that with you and put it on the record. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Council. My name's Fisher and I guess I reside at the train stations and sleep on your park benches and in bus stops and all that. And I'm part of the homeless people in this community. And so, yeah, I know a couple of the people here, like Delia and Jamil, and I know Pastor Vernon, I've stayed in your churches before, so I know you must be a good man. But, yeah, I just wanted to come in and introduce ourselves so you know who we are. I know a lot of people have, you know, negative connotations when it comes to the problems of homelessness. And, you know, it's, it's a very personalized issue, but I think you guys have a lot of good organizations and factions in place here to alleviate this problem to the people that really want to get out, that really want better lives for themselves and, you know, really want to help their fellow man. And I'll tell you, that Saturday when I, we were sitting there at the bus stop and I saw Delia come by with Fred and came over and introduced themselves and told me they were from the council, I don't know who was more nervous, you know, me? I didn't want to give you guys a bad answer or that, but please, don't ever feel scared to come visit us. We're more than welcome. We're just people. We're just people. At the end of the day, we're all just human beings and I just don't want anybody to forget about that. So, you know, it's my first time being here, I'll keep it brief and you'll probably, by the end, you'll get tired of seeing my face, I assure you. But that's all I have and thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Ken. We really appreciate it, Delia, that you came by and you, and you talked to us. There's nothing to be afraid of, nothing. You know? We're very receptive to suggestions by people in the community. As a matter of fact, the, we're located right by the park and we try to keep that park as clean as possible. So if there's debris of any kind or anything, we're the ones around there that are cleaning it up. But we really do appreciate, and we really did appreciate your visit to come in, to come and see us. Because, yeah, I'm letting people on the council, you know? But, you know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be important, you know? And to get some idea of even how to talk to you guys, it's, it's, it was good to talk to Delia, have her come down. And it was Fred that I think came to you. And we really felt that we had some kind of attachment to you guys. So now we're talking, not just the homeless or the houseless, or whatever you wanna, you wanna call us. But to have this communication open between us and you, I think is great. You know? We give a lot of credit to the, to the town of Summit or the city of Summit. I mean, we really feel that, you know, the residents of Summit, you know, are, are very, you know, concerned about their city and, and how the city is, you know, in terms of, you know, safety, safety for their, for their kids. There's two things I know you guys are on top of. Any council in any town would be. And that's home prices and safety of your children. Two big issues. And you have to have that to have a safe community, you know? And have a, a place where you feel comfortable and where you feel your children are comfortable. And where, where are that? You know? So we'll do anything we can do to make sure that, you know, that happens. So, anyway, thank you, Delia, for coming down. It really brought that connection together between the homeless and, and you guys, because we didn't have that before. And we thought that was great.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate it, Delia.
Thank you for coming. I, um, may I? And like I said, that was, I'm embarrassed to say, I was nervous.
Nothing to be nervous about.
The second, the second gentleman I met was a former veteran and then that one, I had a tough time after speaking with him, because I felt like I had failed. And I'm sure you can probably tell people what you did in your former, in your former life. Very successful.
Yeah, well, I was, I was Chief Financial Officer of the New York Mercantile Exchange, not the Stock Exchange, the, the Mercantile Exchange. So this is new to me, you know? I've been out in the street now for about a year and eight months. But things happen, you know? You have, you know, mental illness, alcoholism, drug abuse, and then what happened to me? Okay? Which was, which wasn't those three. But it brought me into a homeless situation, you know? And I've met some great people, you know, in this situation that have helped, helped me out. I mean, we've got, we've got an electrician, we've got, we've got a bunch of people that were responsible people that ran into bad circumstance. And, you know, we're not gonna be here forever, so don't worry about that. We're transient and we truly are transient, you know? For all I know, in six months, you could be talking to somebody else besides me. Let's hope.
Well, hopefully, so we get you a better spot.
But while we're here, we want to make it the best for everybody on our side and your side. You know something? Forget I said that. It's our, we're together on this, there are no sides. Okay?
Thank you.
And the better, you know, we, we understand that and we communicate, that's it. That is the big, the big word, communication back and forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Any other comments? Come on up.
Council President? Can I just say something?
Yeah.
You can come on. No, I just wanted to say, the one question that's on my mind is, it's not a silver bullet, but what can we do to help? I mean, to, to have a chief financial officer standing in front of us who said, you know, there's a, counted off a few things on your hand that says that leads to homelessness, like what is the one thing, if there was one thing, that we could really do to make that impact in the best possible, quickest way? I don't know if there's an answer to that, that, again, not a silver-
You know, I'm not sure that this is a public conversation. I mean, this is very personal, I would think. And I think that there's lots of things that can be done. Sue Fiesler and Summit Warm Hearts are working really hard to be involved. I personally, there's a lot of things-
I just wanted to talk about what was on my heart. That's all. I just wanted to say that, I was just, I was just giving my personal-
What we wanna, what, I, I think, I, I will agree with everything that you said about communication being the most important thing. We, all of us up here, all of our website, our emails are on the city website. Let's, let's connect and I'll give you my card and we'll, we'll get a meeting of, of as many of us as we can at a time together and we'll, and we'll talk about this. I, I think it, it makes sense to do that in a more personal way rather than, than this format. Thank you again for sharing your story. We, I think have another comment. Yes?
John Flack, Carley in Court. I'm a 15-year resident in Summit. I have three children in our school system. I've been a coach of every sport in town, soccer, baseball, basketball, football, flag football, tennis, you name it. I've coached every sport in town. I've been coaching for 12 years and I'm a former minor league baseball player. I've traveled the country and I've seen many, many baseball fields across the country. For a town with our status, our, our baseball fields are in disarray. We heard Mayor Eric mention the safety of our children. It's actually a safety issue for our children. I'm here on behalf of over 1,000 baseball and softball players, 200 coaches and close to 100 teams. Republican or Democrat, this is for our kids. Exactly seven years ago tomorrow in 2016, I first met with Mayor Radus, City Administrator Rogers and Mr. and Mr. Schreger to discuss both the lack of field space and the unsafe condition of our baseball and softball fields in our community. After tremendous public support, this is not an opinion, this is a fact, the master plan states, most commonly mentioned by the public was the condition and overall inadequacy of the city's baseball and softball fields. In order to make the most of available fundraising, I'm sorry, funding and make appropriate decisions, the capital planning process should include an appropriate venue where their ideas are submitted, vetted and prioritized. Assist in identifying a possible location for and developing a feasible plan for consolidating improving Summit's baseball facilities. We are the only sport mentioned in the master plan. Since this was memorialized in the master plan in December of 2016, I've had multiple meetings with Mayor Radus, City Administrator Rogers and Mr. Schreger. We've exchanged many, many emails in regard to the Field of Dreams complex proposal. I heard Mayor Radus and Mr. Eric say before, the safety of our kids is our number one priority. Our baseball and softball facilities are in the worst condition they have ever been. Last week, during a baseball game, a foul ball hit a senior at our high school banquet in the face. He was diagnosed with a concussion and we were very fortunate, he did not lose his eye. This is just one example of many safety issues we have. I heard Ms. Hairston say, we have received $640,000, $645,000 in grant money, a 500% increase year over year. How, how much of this grant money has gone to baseball and softball? Can you help us get grant money for, from the county for open parks, from the state? I'd like to tell you, since 2016 and since we were put in the master plan, the baseball and softball community, every other sport in town has received money from the town, the city or the county. In 2018, soccer received $525,000. City capital improvement budget, a grant through the Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund and city's field restoration fund. In 2022, as well as 2018, basketball received $173,000 in 2022. And I call it four million, four and a half million dollars as part of the community center to rebuild basketball courts there. And football and lacrosse have received in 2016, '17 and '18, $635,000, $741,000 and $434,000 respectively. Tennis received $635,000 in 2016 to redo the courts. Track and field received a new track for $338,000. Paddle, the paddle courts were redone in 2023 for $338,000 and, and, I'm sorry, for $225,000. Every sport, Cornhusk Fieldhouse was redone for $296,000 and $50,000.
Can I ask you to wrap up?
Yeah. The point is, there's been no funding for baseball and softball, but every other sport in town has received funding. That being said, I've met multiple times, like I said, with the mayor, Mr. Rogers and Mr. Schreger. I'd like to hear from the city council, knowing that this isn't the city plan, especially for the veterans on the staff here, Ms. Hairston, Mr. Miniger, Ms. Fox, Ms. Levine, what have you done during your term to help us improve our baseball and softball facilities and complex?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. So I'll, I'll start. So I had an unremarkable baseball career as a, as a young, as a young lad in Summit. I was a, I was an umpire for a minute when I was 13. It's, baseball's important to me and I, I think we have spent some money on baseball at some point, right? Mayor?
I think you're inaccurate. When, Delia, we got emails today from Mark Ozerowski. There's a couple hundred thousand at least that has been spent on the baseball fields in the last two years. But we've talked about this and what your initial plan was, a Field of Dreams at the transfer station.
Why are you laughing?
Um, no, because I think about the movie, Field of Dreams, which is one of my favorite movies. I'm a huge baseball fan personally, as a spectator.
But Mayor, you and I have spoken about, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, what-
Well, you know what? They don't know, they're, it's, it's a conversation that we would have really more with Mr. Schreger and Mr. Rogers. And the council can't answer that, answer those questions right now.
Right. Just so, just so you're aware and for everyone watching, you can't, we, we can't have a poll of council members from the community. What I think we will do is, is we'll have, Delia's new to community programs, parking services. We have some more information from Mark today. So let's start the conversation with that committee.
Okay.
And then obviously what we're talking about is, at, at some point, we're gonna be talking about capital spending, right? And we had this conversation earlier tonight about our budget where we have to balance the investment that we know we need to make in our infrastructure and the recreation facilities and all the equipment and all the vehicles and all the things that we need without blowing up our debt entirely. And so it's all, just, every project has merit. We wanna do everything. We wanna, we wanna spend hundreds of millions of dollars, but we wanna also be responsible in the way that we do it.
Right, I appreciate it.
So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Can I make one request?
Sure.
We have an election coming up in November and those running for office make a point to let us know what their plan is for the baseball and softball community, especially knowing that it's in the master plan and nothing's really been done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're done with public comments, right? Okay. So we're moving on to council member comments and new business. Any takers? Yes?
Yeah, so I wanted to remind people, it is actually, May is Lyme Awareness Month. Lyme disease is a very serious disease and I'm looking at Councilwoman Levine because you're at the arboretum and, I won't tell your story, but anyway. So I've had, I was like, maybe I shouldn't say it, but I've had a very serious chronic Lyme disease and I tell my kids every night, we, it was a very warm winter, check for ticks at night. I don't know if we spray the fields for ticks. Do we? Director Schreger, through you, Council President.
Ticks?
Ticks.
Yeah, I'd have to circle back on that one. I'm not sure if the stuff they put down is treats for ticks, but I'll get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other council member comments? New business? Nope.
I actually, this is probably inappropriate, but because I have Dr. Adams here and we're so excited about the planning that's going on for Juneteenth, that it will be our second one celebrated by the community. Through you, Council President, may she come and just make a pitch about it?
If that's okay with you, Dr. Adams.
Is that okay with you, Dr. Adams? You can say no.
We're putting you on the spot for sure, yeah.
Well, I must say, I'm accustomed to being put on the spot, not as much now as when I was a professor before students. But I am, as you know, the Juneteenth, Summit's Juneteenth celebration is sponsored by the Department of Community Programs. And I, in fact, am part of the community group that's working with them in terms of the planning going forward. I think this year's celebration is going to top last year's and will lay the groundwork for what will be, and I hope will be sustained, as part of Summit's inclusiveness, equity, and diversity programs, along with pride, along with all of the other heritage celebrations. We are a community of diverse people and we need to show that inclusiveness. So please participate. There will be good music, good food, and good information in terms of this breakthrough in American democracy and what it means for all of us. Remember, it is our national holiday and you too benefit it from that message that went to Galveston. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's on June 17th, I mean, I should add, Saturday, June 17th, here in Summit.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Okay. Other council member comments? Delia? Yes?
Council President Martin, one question I had is, can you give us an update on if we've made any progress with the SharePoint for the committee agendas?
I would have to toss that to Michael or Rosie, and I think it's being discussed in Athens, right? So Michael, we'll start with you. I defer to the chair, if you'd like to speak to it.
I guess, I mean, you can give a little bit of background, but I just thought I'd ask it tonight.
Are you talking about the SharePoint for the agendas? I'll throw that, I'm gonna punt to Rosemary. That's okay.
So we've had conversations with Department Heads and I'm currently working with our IT manager to set up the SharePoint. And it's coming very, very shortly, but there's a little logistic thing.
Sure. I guess just so we can educate the public, one of my goals was to, we all have our own committees, but I think it's really important, I've been sharing my agendas with my colleagues and sometimes they share them as well with me, but I think it's really important that we all see what's going on in committees. I'm brand new and I'm sure that Ms. Fox has many more, many better ideas on parking than I do right now. So I think it's really important that we share our agendas and I'm not gonna be the smartest person on every decision I make in my committee, so I'm really thankful that everybody is open to that. I think it's gonna be really important for the community.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Other council member comments? New business? I think we're good, right? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.